Dear the board members, thank you for the state, we thank you for all your lessons, and we thank you for this opportunity to work to serve in this capacity that you call us to, once we go into this meeting, we ask for the business, we ask for the circle, we ask for the peace, and we just thank you and apologize, and I'm going to close now.
(Inaudible) By the religion as it is divided by the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see this? Mr. Murphy, would you read our vision statement, please?
Cherokee County Board of Education's conditions for every student to graduate from high school to be globally independent, work, post-secondary education, and higher level, personally.
All right, thank you. We have the agenda before you, and any additions or corrections that may be made to this agenda. Hearing none, the agenda stands. You also have before you the meeting minutes from our last regular meeting in addition to our closed session. Are there any objections or corrections to be made to those minutes from the previous meeting? All right, hearing none of those things as well. Okay, at this time, we'll have public comment. We do have pretty folks signed up, so give me just a second, and I'm going to read this statement. The board will now open the floor to those who wish to make public comments. If there is a group present, please select one representative to speak from your group. If you have not completed the sign-in sheet, please state your name and address for our records. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. This will be the only time that individuals from the floor will be allowed to speak unless a board member deals the floor to them. To protect the board's legal process as well as each individual's rights involving complaints or issues affecting school system employees, the board cannot hear or complain against an employee. In the event you are here to voice a complaint against a school system employee, I refer you to School Board Policy 2310, Public Participation at Board Needs. All right, so first up, Mr. Dennis Curtis. You've got three minutes, start going.
My name is Dennis Curtis, I serve through term on the school board, I was just through law. The reason I'm here is, I realize what you're going through, I've been through that, and what my biggest concern is two things. One of them is, when I was on the board, our main objective back then was the students. That was our resolve, that we would try to take care of our students. I do not believe that it's, we should rethink of moving these small children from school to school. My daddy said we're going to get on one bus to leave home, four, five, six, seven, eight year old kids. They could drive Peachtree, then they could get on another bus and drive Murphy. Same thing with the Marquee. Now, you put them on the bus, and that's it, and it's been cold over Peachtree, or Peachtree and Hainault, and that, or that, no, there's no seat belts on those buses. And secondary road shares can be terrible, and are terrible. I wish to reconsider, I think, to be honest with you, I think it's cruel to put them little warm kids on that bus for some lunch a day. Twice a day, they'd have to ride two buses. So I wish you to reconsider and think through that before you do it. But, another thing is, is there's a movement within the community to build a new Murphy High School. Murphy High School has over a half, fifty-four percent of all the high school students in Cherokee County. I would like for you to consider building a new school at the school renovation, but we have problems with it. And it's so close, you know all about this, you'd be at the death for a long time, but Murphy's school, my three generations of my family have been through that school. That school is old, and I don't know, I've seen evidence, went down there and walked through it and looked at, when I was on the board last time, we sprayed asbestos and then we sealed it, cost a lot of money. That school was built, I believe it opened in nineteen fifty-eight, that's sixty-seven years ago. Now, we did a whole lot of renovations when I was on the board one time. Andrews, Allah Stan, we didn't that for Murphy High School. We did the secondary school there, but I'd like you to consider building a new school. And let's hope it's got together, and we'd like it at least get brought up and thought about. Now, Murphy is an old school, which is for high school students in Cherokee County. So, that's what I want to say, and I appreciate it, and I really feel sorry for it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. Paul Wilson.
Good evening, thank y'all. What I have basically is just some questions, and I didn't generate these questions, I generated by some grandparents, parents, kind of community leaders, business folks, and I can give a copy, email you a copy if you'd like, but, all these questions, of course, are kind of about complaining. As part of the application process, DPI and the North Carolina General Statute require feasibility study and official qualifications in communities that would lose schools consolidation. Do these conditions need to be met before the grant application deadline? It's the deadline September first. Would any county commission endorsement of a grant application where these conditions haven't been met be in violation of DPI requirements and NC general statutes? In the past, the state stipulated that the application described the critical deficiencies in facilities that will be replaced. What are the critical deficiencies in each of the schools to be replaced? For example, how are the elementary schools in question inadequately serving the current and future student population as specified by the state? The Department of Public Instruction wants to see that more than just saving money, a new facility will offer new and enhanced educational opportunities to the kids. Where are these new opportunities spelled out? According to the state, strong application will include professional design schematics showing the components of the new facility, its footprint on the property, outdoor recreation parking, traffic access, et cetera, developed with input from DPI consulting staff. Has this been done? Will this kind of material be available to the county commissioners and be included in the application? Would we be better off taking a year to prepare a much stronger and more competitive application for funding a new Murphy High, consolidated with the Community College and School of Innovation, a project that the state has already invested in? This could replace the oldest and most expensive school to operate, greatly expand the education and career opportunities available to students, and contribute to our workforce and economic development. We could use the next twelve months to work with DPI planning staff to do a detailed feasibility study as required, to fully document the need, the advantages, and the design and costs to the county and our taxpayers. This could also help keep kids in our school system rather than closing community elementary schools, and encouraging families to look elsewhere to educate their kids, such as homeschool. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, can you email me the?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Davis, I do.
All that we've heard, very much to say, except that I did see some reference to the grant cycle last year, if you all have any interest. And apparently, there were a hundred and twenty-two applications for the need-based construction money, and there were seven successful grant awards. I had no idea that it's as competitive as that. Out of the hundred and twenty-two applications, there were seven awards. And I spent years writing grants for Murphy Medical Center, and I've never seen a cycle as competitive as that. I don't think you folks are ready. There's, there's no way you can put together a competitive application for a fall deadline. I don't know if it'll be September first year, or legislature hasn't passed a budget yet, and that's, that's still up in the air, but I don't know how in the world you can put together a competitive application that deals with the kinds of things that Paul was talking about, and how can the county commission understand what their commitment might be? As of, as of January, Cherokee County is now a tier-two county, no longer a tier-one county, which means that it is not as needed, as needy as it has been. So we're not, we're no longer in that, in that highly needy category, the tier-one category, we're in the tier-two category now. And, and what's that, what's that going to mean for our eligibility? I, I think it's just going to make us a lot less competitive, especially in a cycle where their DPI is going to see applications from counties that were affected by the hurricane. So if you're planning on applying in fall cycle, you just don't have the substance to get together yet to be competitive, especially when there's going to be the additional need as a result of the hurricane. And the county commission is, this, the county commission can't calculate its obligation. As a tier-two county, it might mean that the county match now will be twice what it was last time. The county match increases as you go from tier-one to tier-two counties. So, so it may well be twice what it was last time. And then here's a question about the property. Where is it going to be? You know, that doesn't seem to be even applied to the state without knowing where this, where this school is going to be. And how are you going to pay for it? The county command, the county match cannot be used to pay for property. The state grant money cannot be used to pay for property. So how can the county know what its obligation might be? They're just, I'm going to finish the sentence, they're just a whole set of unanswered questions, I think, that, that are going to influence the strength of the case that you could possibly make.
Do the three of y'all plan to split the whole meeting proposing comments?
I can't.
I would love for the three to be split.
Thank you. You're welcome. That brings us to reports, and so now we'll turn the floor over to Dr. Woody.
Thank you. First thing I have is the legislative report. We're using half-cent sales tax, there's six projects that we're going to send over to the county commission. The first one is another catch basin at Murphy High, Murphy Middle School property, some replacing flooring at Murphy High and Murphy Elementary School, replacing a sidewalk, and doing some isocic work on the Peachtree Pre-K building, some generator repair at two places, Andrews Middle and Martin's Creek. And then, on the Murphy Middle School project, the, they need to complete a survey, and within your package, you have information on the survey that needs to be done to move, begin that project moving forward. You also have your personnel report within your packet, you have your student fee report within your packet, and then just letting you know, two overnight field trips that have been approved, is striking the Earl College, they're going to Denmark again in the spring, February twenty-sixth, and that's been approved, and then Andrews High School, Washington, cheerleaders have gone to a cheerleading camp at University of Asheville. And that concludes my report.
Great. You've heard Dr. Woody's report as presented, do I have a motion and a second to accept that report?
Take a moment.
Mr. Coleman makes a motion, draw a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Coleman, discussion?
No.
Mr. Murphy, discussion? Fellow board members, discussion? All right, don't call that, listen, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Murphy, head of the board. Mr. Coleman.
Hi.
Mr. Ellis.
Hi.
Mr. Matthews.
Hi.
Mr. Tatum.
Hi.
Mrs. Gads.
Aye.
Mrs. Rakers.
Aye. All right, next on the list would be our finance officers' reports, and at this time, we'll be able to record these aspects.
I do not have a report received in the matter, Chair.
Great, moving right along. Board Chair, I don't have a whole lot to talk about right now. I'm going to say some things when I can better gather my thoughts on how to respond to some things that I've heard in the last couple of weeks. What I am going to comment on is positivity in what we've done this summer. I was just wrapped up all our summer camps, all our reading camps, and how we were able to serve students in this community. I'm grateful that our federal funds have come through for those programs, I guess those aren't in question, and they are a great need, and they are greatly used in this community. So I'm grateful that those funds have come through, that we'll be able to serve our students. I'm looking forward to our teachers and support staff, and those who are off during the summer months coming back within the next couple of weeks, and I look forward to a fantastic school year next year. We've got some great administrators, we have some wonderful teachers, we have the best support staff in every area that I can think of. Anytime somebody needs something, you work together and you get it done, whether it's at the central office level, whether it's at the school level. We have so many wonderful community partners that we work with all year long. I try my very best to highlight them every single meeting, because they do so much within their own community, with their own schools, that there are ways, sometimes we would not be able to get it done, but I'm very grateful for those people in the community, those organizations, those partnerships, that continue to step up, when it would be really easy to walk away, so thank you for that. All right, moving on, we've got new business. So, we, first up would be policy amendments. I think I'm going to defer to it, because Mr. Page, what am I doing with this? Because I'm not talking about this.
I want to move again.
We're on policies, number nine.
Is that a term?
No, so, well, I think the, are these something we can reverse? Okay, but we have one that we need to do something with.
Yes, this is the forward exchange duty.
Oh, that's right, okay, so.
That's on the next one.
Okay, so these policies that are listed right here, forty-twenty-three-seven-two-thirty-three, forty-forty-seven-three-ten, forty-two-forty-seven-three-twelve, forty-three-eighteen, sixty-two-twenty, sixty-three-thirty, seventy-one-thirty, eighty-three-oh-five, eighty-three-oh-five-R, and ninety-one-ten, our first readings. So, we've got some discussion about those, let's, let's talk about those.
Madam Chair, I had asked that the forty-three-eighteenth, use of wireless communication devices, come back up for review, and had a discussion with a fellow board member about that, and, and, you know, in light of the, this, the state change and how that would affect us, I, and I don't have very strong feelings on what we need to do in response to that, but I do know that if we would want to make some type of change where the school year started, in theory, we would need to bring it up for first reading so we can begin that conversation in at seven-thirty, but, but I see that you're, it looks like we're not meeting yet until after school starts, so I don't know how that would affect the conversation. I did see, since we're just discussing this, I did see that in response to this, Transylvania County, what they were doing is, they're not making a policy change right now, but while they review it, they have apparently given their, their board has given their superintendent directive to, to issue a statement saying that during school day, all cell phones are to be powered off. So students are allowed to bring the phones, but they can't be turned off. So, I'm not saying necessarily that we do that, but that might be a way, in light of us not having enough meetings to make a policy change, to maybe think about something like that, where we could, we could operate like that, as we remove that policy and see how it compares to what the state requiring of us. But I do know that this board has expressed pretty strong feelings about cell phones and where they stand on those. I see both sides of that. I will say, though, that I have had teachers reach out to me and ask that we ban cell phones, because they feel like they are a disruption to the educational environment, and I don't know what goes on in classrooms, but the teachers do. And so, when, when teachers reach out to me and ask that we ban those, that does at least carry weight with me, though. They know what they're talking about, that must be, at least their experience, some type of disruption to the learning environment. So, so anyway, I just, I just wanted us to bring that up and discuss it and see if there's anybody had any feelings on what we need to do. Or maybe not.
Well, go ahead, Dr. Woody.
I think there's two things, and just telling me what the law, the new law, just to make sure everybody's clear, there's two things that the new law is going to implement. One is, within our policy that we currently have, it's going to change reasonable, if you look within the first couple paragraphs, they're about reasonable, it's going to change that to educational purpose, the way it is. And then the second thing is, it's sort of similar to what you said, Mr. Tatum, that they are to be, I think it's enacted the way it's written within our policy. The change that is coming is going to be, basically, they're supposed to be turned off, for lack of a better term. Now, that is during instructional time, so I don't want anybody to be confused on that, that, the board, that that's when it's recorded to. So that just gives you a little information of what is coming, as you did the discussion.
So, to that, to be powered off during instructional time, is that something that we can, I guess in the strain of Transylvania County, direct, direct to view until we come back and meet and make it part of a policy? We need to do that? So how do you, how do you all feel about that? So everything that he's just told us, if we, if they're to be powered off, if they're not, during instructional time, not to be used, until this language is clarified, and we get our policy changed based on, you know, what's sent out from the state board, to reflect that, how do you feel about that?
I think we would also have to give pretty good, solid direction to principals and teachers of what happens to students, I know that, but in the, in between, and, so it's not, I mean, it's going to have a very determined one they're going to use on, and so, we need to supply teachers as well as principals with that answer, this is, this is what happens, but it is in there, but to make sure that, as much as we, you know, adopt something and go something, we need to make sure that we give them a greater interest in the book.
The other thing that I'll add to it is that we have to be consistent across the board. Every school has to operate the same way and have the same consequence for the same action. I don't want, because sometimes I hear, well, now listen, I take a lot of things with a grain of salt, because people just can't be all kinds of things, and they got, that's true, but a lot of times, but, you know, we can't, I don't want to hear, well, you know, John Smith School down here, they let their kids do it, have it during lunch, and they get to do whatever, and, and then, you know, whatever. Jump around the school over here, well, they're just like, no, we can't have anything. We've got to be consistent in how we handle it between all of our schools, we have to be on the exact same page, so whatever we come up with, whatever we decide, however we're going to move forward, we all have to operate that way. That's the only way this is going to be effective. Now, personally, you know, this is a nightmare to me. That's my personal feelings about it. It does serve a good purpose, it can serve a good purpose, and I do see where you could potentially use it, or a limited basis, or whatever, however, if you try, you know, choose to pull it in during, during instruction. But, but, the things that we hear with what young children who have phones deal with, what they get wrapped up in, what they get roped into, how they are enticed, how, how much it affects their life, you know, it is a sad state of affairs anymore. I just, again, personally, with my own daughter, when she was growing up, I was not very popular with her, because she did not have cell phone when she was in the fifth grade, like a lot of her classmates did. And I realize now that there are probably students who are even younger than that who have cell phones and bring them to school. She did not get her cell phone until she turned fourteen, and probably, really, I should have held out with people a little bit longer, but she entered high school, and she was playing sports, and I'm grateful I was with her everywhere she went, but, but, I did get her cell phone then, whatever. But, however we choose to move forward with this, I would assume that we are also going to take into account with, you know, administrators, because this will affect them ultimately, they will be the ones that have to deal with these things. So, so, just a little information, in January twenty-twenty-five, in the N A magazine, they did a survey, educators speak out on social media, cell phones, and mental health. More than ninety percent feel that students' mental health is a serious issue at their school, and that things have gotten worse in the last two years. The vast majority say students are having trouble concentrating, acting out, not showing up to school. Forty percent say cyberbullying is the biggest concern about students' social media use. Eighty-four percent say social media contributes to students' mental health issues, and eighty-one percent say cell phones are a contributor. Seventy-three percent of teachers in school where students have access to cell phones and personal devices report disruptions in their classrooms. Thirty-eight percent are concerned that social media prevents students from developing social skills. If you will do research online, you will find out that this is a universal problem, and it needs to be dealt with. Teachers have a hard enough job trying to do their job teaching students to be proficient in math and reading and social skills. We need to do everything we can to help them be successful, and if that means banning the use of them having cell phones, you know, the school they have them turned off, we should go for it. I agree. So we, if, if what I hear is saying in the interim, until we can get the policies to reflect that, is powered off during educational times. So we need to define the educational time, would that be seven-thirty-three, what is, what is the educational time? Because I don't want to get into that, so, you know, from the beginning, you have to school right until the end, and it sounds like a name.
And I think that that's really what that law says, right? And it says, and the exception would be for, you know, I E Ps or five oh fours, and that's if those I E Ps and those five oh fours specifically address that. And that doesn't mean if, if a student, you know, their parent says, well, my child has a five oh four, so he just has a cell phone. No, it's what, what is involved in, was listed in there. And I, I would also say, I mean, I echo what Mrs. Gads said, and I know she shared a couple of videos with us that have been pretty telling, and I think the one that, that she shared where the guy says, when your child reaches a certain age, if you feel a need because of sports or other things like that, to give your child a flip phone, why on earth would you open your child up to the worldwide web there where, you know, they can be accessed by pedophiles and other people? Which I thought, that, that says a lot, I think. On a personal level, or a personal note, which I think I'm probably the only one that can, can speak to this on this board, is until recently, I guess the past two years, is until recently, I guess the past two years is when I finished. But prior to that, I taught high school for six years. And do I think cell phones are a problem? Absolutely. And we can, you know, and, and not only that, that, what I would say too, let me preface that by saying that we need to tweak our policy, our current policy. Our current policy doesn't do it. I mean, it, it doesn't. But as a teacher, when you talk about whether you have, you know, we try different things, whether you have pockets at the front of the classroom where students put their phones in. I remember I explained that one day with my students. And I said, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna take attendance by those pockets, you know. And so I think the second or third day, I look and there's like seven phones in the pockets. And I currently, I typically had 30, 32 students in class. So I remember the, one of those days, I looked at it and I said, that's interesting, only seven of you have cell phones. You know, of course, probably 28, 29 out of the 30 have cell phones. But, so what, what they end up doing is then they put old phone cases in there or they put old phones. And so even if their phones are in the pockets, they have earbuds, they're changing music, they're fast forwarding, they're doing all these things like that. And if, if we stop, if we say, okay, we want them turned off at the beginning of the day and they can be turned on. And I'll be honest with you too, they don't need cell phones during lunch. They need to communicate with each other. They need, that's, I mean, I think educators would, would probably tell you that. That's a problem, people can't communicate anymore. And so, you know, I, I think that that would be a good, good move. Also, as far as, it would also help in, you know, having these phones in pockets or whatever, whatever it looks like. Again, you saw what I did before, I said, okay, so only seven of you have cell phones, right? And so if you're keeping, roll, and I say, okay, you know, James, so you don't have a cell phone in there, where's your cell phone? Oh, I don't have my cell phone today. Okay, are you sure? No, I don't. Sally, you don't have, it's not in the pocket, where's your cell phone? Okay, well, here it is. Well, you can see the instructional time that, that you're wasting in all of that. And so again, I've been in the classroom. I was in the classroom for six years for high school students. I, I saw it firsthand. And so it, it was frustrating. I'm trying to teach them Spanish and they're listening to some music. In fact, my students used to say, after a while, after they knew my expectations, I'd say, Mr. Magg, can I listen to music? I'd say, no, I'll sing to you if you want to, if you want music. And again, that's even a, a whole other thing. You know, if you've got children or students listening to music, what are they listening to? You know, is there, and, and a student will tell you, oh, it's, you know, well, does it have bad words in it? No, no, no. Well, what I consider bad words is probably different than what they consider bad words. So, you know, there's all kinds of things involved in that. And even when you lose these things like instruct, we can't, we can't use phones unless, unless we use that in an instructional thing. Well, that's ridiculous, I'll just say it. I mean, as a teacher, you have limit, you have their attention for a limited amount of time. Well, you need to use that in, in the most effective way. And having them get on their cell phones and do different things is not the most effective way, in my opinion. And I see some of the, some of the educators shaking their heads, no, it's not. So anyway, and I can talk all day about it, but I'll, I'll stop. But if you, if you wanna know, you know, a personal story or personal stories based on my experience, very recently, for six years in a classroom, come to me and I'll be happy to talk to you about it. Let me see, can I say one other thing? I think I've shared this before, but my, my granddaughter, I have to bring on her, but she is eight years old and she does not have a cell phone. She has had very, very little exposure even to cell phones and even other screens. She can, right now, she can spend 20 minutes on an iPad a day. But most of the time, she's in karate and doing other things and reading, so she doesn't even get on an iPad. But even television, I don't think she was ever exposed to a television until she was probably six years old. Well, guess what, she's eight years old. She probably reads at a seventh grade level, you know. So there's a lot to be said to doing away with that. And, and it's a hard thing. You know, I think that, again, in class, sometimes I would have a student that would sneak their cell phone out and I would say, what are you doing? You're not supposed to have that. Well, my mom's texting me. And I said, tell your mom you're in Spanish class. You know, and so it's, it's those things that's just frustrating for a teacher and an administrator.
Yeah, I see that, I, yeah.
That'll be fine, so.
You know, and I, I personally believe that whichever way we go, yeah, we'll get some flack from students, we will. But the majority of it will come from the parents. Just to be honest.
And, and part of that too, Ms. Roper, is, and, and I, I think we've all heard this, it's an addiction.
It is.
And so when you, when you try to take something away from somebody, yeah, you're gonna have issues. And, but it's not, it's not just with, with young people, with children, with young adults. It's with adults. You know, I, I see in, in, in public, a lot of times, people will have earbuds in them. And I just wanna say, I, I don't know, are you listening to me? I, I don't know what we're doing, you know. So, and it's weird, but people just don't see that anymore. I think our society is going backward in a lot of ways.
Just one thought, before we go to all out banning, because we're starting to think we have to take into consideration some sections based on medical issue. Because I mean, one thing that comes to my mind is, I still wanted to have ethics.
Sure.
Sure. And I feel like we have a place for that though, that, that addresses that. I can't.
Pardon me?
Yeah, and it's in the law, it's, it's in the law, so it would have to be reflected in this policy because of the law. And I agree with you.
Okay. So then, is it my understanding then for tonight that, that basically we want to give a directive, cell phones powered off during the school day until we get this policy through second reading? Is that what I'm hearing, Brittany? Yeah?
As long as there's a network section.
Right. Which we're following the law, so it's very.
All right, then Johnny, how do I need to address that?
So I think you qualify exactly when they're powered off. When they get on the school bus, when they get on, when they get on school campus, when does that turn, when do they, when can they turn them off first?
Maybe the school began, so if I, okay, let me just go to another, what if I, 7:30? When do classes actually begin? Do you all, you're saying, your classes start later, like what time does that work?
I would say when, when classes start. Pardon me?
That's what I would agree. I would say very young time.
Right.
I mean, like Ms. Lederman, what time would this?
First block starts at 8:00.
So 8:00, so at 8:00, at Murphy High School, they would be powered off, right? And then it ends at what time?
9:30.
No, I mean this.
Oh, this, I was going, 13:00.
3:00. Yeah. Oh, at 3:00? Thank you.
Because I had written, I like how they won't remember the year, 7:30, 3:15, but 8:30, 8:30, 8:00, 3:15, would we be agreeable to that?
Hold on, I wanna ask a question. High school professors that are sitting in here right now, I want your input on this. You can sit here and say these things, but give your input, what do you think?
I would go in.
Yeah, I suppose.
I think it's a good idea. There are, there are kids who have come to me and said, can you take my phone because I can't be trusted? And I'm distracted by it.
They are a huge distraction, I mean, hands down. And I'm all for them just being powered off from, from first block starts till the end of the school day. I think we see a significant increase in our kids actually paying attention to the instruction that's going on. And I'll just be perfectly honest, a lot of the bullying that I've had to deal with at the high school level, guess what it's been through? Social media.
Yes.
And it has. And, I mean, I call it cowering behind the kids, which probably shouldn't say that, but that's what it is. You have a lot of courage when you get behind that key, have it.
Oh, absolutely, you do. And it doesn't matter how young, I don't, it's really easy to say something through a social device.
Yeah, sure is. But I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, I think it would make high school tremendously.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'll say this, I, I absolutely agree, yes. Powered down during the, during the instructional day. I don't have a problem with that. I don't necessarily know that I would support it completely, you can't even have a cell phone. I don't think, to me, it's not realistic with some of our kids in the situations they're in for after school, whatever, you know, whatever. I just, but during the school day, during instructional time, absolutely.
If there's an emergency, I promise.
That's likely, yes, yes, yes.
What does Mr. Porcher, what do you, what do you think?
I am in favor of anything that provides additional focus and it's something we're here to do. But I would like, whatever is decided about this policy, to be reasonable and enforceable. Teachers and administrators have a lot to accomplish during the day. I don't want a complete focus in terms of trying to, just being focused on dealing with cell phones. I would think it would be a good idea to get some student leaders maybe from the schools to help craft what this should look like. And I also think as educators, we have a responsibility to teach students to use technology in a meaningful way. I know we do that with our one-to-one program. But in the real world, people use cell phones for work. We use cell phones, all of us use them, they're a part of life.
Yes.
So how do we use them responsibly?
Sure.
And is there a time to turn them off and not be focused on them? But is there a way to use them constructively? Yes, and we owe it back to its children too.
Middle school? Anything else any different?
I would encourage trying to get parent buy-in. Some, some initial love issues I have is students are meeting with parents.
Yes.
So if we could facilitate that in some way, I think that would, that would really help enforce this policy. And a solid consequence, just across the board, this is one of those no questions asked. It's in the policy, but I feel like there could be some, some wiggle room there also. Just because you take it for 10 days, they come back. And again, it's just, it's hard to keep up with. And then just terrifying, it's not a good thing.
You can, I mean, you can send out a, a printout, right? That says, that's parent sign, understanding. So.
When we take phones, they come, parents have to collect from the office and they have to sign the policies.
I'm saying, as the school year starts, the first week, we send out a, where they have to sign and they, and it says that they understand that there's no communication between them and their kids, that's not acceptable either, you know. And then when it happens, say, hey, you signed this?
Wouldn't it make sense to do it maybe 15, like they can use them the last 10 minutes before they leave in case, hey, I forgot my football cleats or my something, you know, they, or I eat or I don't like.
Because they can go to the, they can go to the office and they call mom that way, you know, that kind of stuff. Don't give them, don't give them that.
I called her very years ago, and I was blaming myself. Cell phones, it didn't happen back then. And I promised you, there was never an issue, you know, parent wasn't bothered with it. And somebody was informed about the situation up there and that needed to be answered.
Yeah, I'll agree with that because, you know, a lot of times I do hear when people say, oh, how am I getting touch for a child? You, you contact the school, how will my kid get home? They go to the front office, they talk to their teacher, they talk to the, whomever. I mean, I worked for the front office at Murphy High School for several, several years and we had a little designated student phone over there, she, they had an issue. And I promise you, if I got one parent phone call a day, I got a parent phone call a day. And I make you say that that has not changed one bit. It's probably multiplied a, a good little bit, but, you know, that, that argument, this doesn't hold a whole lot of water with me. Surely to goodness, people can understand, we really do want what's best for your child and should an issue arise, we're going to find a way to make contact with the guardian. Like I, that's a non-issue to me, when they, when they come back with, I need to be able to get a hold of my kid. No, you, you need to go through the proper channels is what you need to do. That, to me, that's where, where it starts. I don't.
Ms. Roper, can I say something?
Yes.
I'd also like to look at the, the show up when they, students enter the building.
So when do kids start coming into your building?
7:00.
Gotcha.
And that, that would help, again, if they could go to the, they, in May 11th, the office, so they become the office representative in May 11th.
Okay. All right, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing several different things. I'm hearing as early as 7:15. I'm also hearing, you know, let's, I do like the idea of Mr. Porcher bringing in some students to move off of this, like I guess through SGA or whatever. I, I, I do like that idea, so.
I would just say, once you enter the building.
Or come on the campus?
Uh, once you enter the building, you're soft.
I agree with it, I like it.
This is a long one, so.
I think so, but, but right now, from what we're doing to try to get this to that policy, we're just trying to.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, I get that, but I'm just saying that the law says this.
I was thinking the law used the word.
I've got it pulled up.
I mean, I would often even say like.
But the law, I can't even.
Yeah. Ms. Gadd, I just want you to know that Steve said it, carry your kids. Your pigeons back in here, they will sing.
Yes, I didn't really ask you.
I just wanted you to be aware.
Well, Mr. Magg, I would say, to, to, to watch when they're, like, here's. I would like to ask a question. Does the state law address cellphone use by faculty and staff? Because what we're gonna hear from a lot of parents is, well, if my kid can't use them, why can't the teacher?
I agree with that. I would feel the same way.
So I would just want to, does, does the law address that any way? Or is it not?
I think it takes two weeks.
Well, that's what we're gonna hear. We're gonna hear it in fairness. It's not fair if my kid might be able to use a cell phone.
So, well, I, I don't know because, all right, I'm gonna do, go ahead.
Okay.
You can go to 30, because I think you and I might be able to say the same thing.
Yes, because my staff has to have their phone on, you know, because my inner community is working on my buildings. And so I've got all my staff on the reminder app. So if I've got something that needs to be pushed out immediately, that way they get it.
Great point, and, and thank you for reminding me of that. And that's on your, top of your facility needs list, and that's a safety issue.
Yes, it is.
And that needs to be addressed pretty quickly by this board.
I think too, you have to go with the teacher. I have a little more of a feeling, I mean, I think I should do. But we're not, we're not here to.
I, I was, I was just asking you.
One, one issue the cell phones do have is one of the new safety features, the Ray-Ban, and it's hard to expect more to that. But that app allows teachers to get that and put out a panic alert that impacts the whole building, surrounding areas, Murphy High and Murphy Middle. So that is a critical safety feature that is available now.
Is it only used in those two schools?
No, it's, it's in all of schools.
Oh, okay.
So, so that is, that's one, that's one thing built into the staff cell phones where they might have that phone laying on the table, better to access it.
I venture to say too, that if a teacher is teaching, they're not on their phone. So, I mean, we're talking about students and the distraction is with students. And while, no, I don't desire to have staff in their own phone the whole entire time there, you know, job, whatever, wherever they be, while they're on the clock or whatnot, we, we have to make some considerations out for, as Ms. Lederman has pointed out, the teachers and. we, we have to weigh some considerations out for, as Ms. Wood has pointed out, with teachers, and, and Mr. Picken has pointed out, sometimes it is just because that's the way it is. I'm the adult, you're a student. This is how it's going to be today. I don't need you questioning me about why I'm doing this for 14 different months. You were here to learn, and this is what we're here to do. Don't ask me, why you gotta do it. Because I want the camera back sometimes because I said so. And I'm speaking from dealing with my child about some things because I said so. Because that is what it is. We questioned me about it. I've laid down the law. This is what we're doing. Uh, parents, you need to lay down the law at your house too. This is where it stems from. And I know, I know, I'm gonna catch a whole lot of flack for this, and I really don't care. It starts at home. You want your child to behave well in these classrooms? That behavior begins at the house. It must be taught by the parent. It is reinforced here at school. It is not my job as the leader of this board. It is not board members' jobs. It is not principal's jobs. It is not teacher's jobs to parent your child. That is not the case. And I realize I have gone off on a tangent tonight, but enough is enough. Take the cell phone out of your kid's hand, tell them to turn it off and put it in their backpack. You got an issue, go to your teacher, go to your administrator, go to the front office. Be done with it. But that behavior begins at home, and I know the pushback is going to be from parents. Kids will adapt. They're adaptable. They won't like it, but they will do it. Parents, enforce it. Back us up. Help us out. We're not saying completely ban every single electronic device from this campus, but we have got to be reasonable about some things.
I was looking at a summary on here. It says, um, students are prohibited from using cell phones during instructional time unless granted an exception by a teacher or for emergencies. So that's.
Okay.
And that's not from the law. I will, um, give a disclaimer. I did a AI overview on that. But it also says, schools must adopt policies to ensure internet safety, blah, blah, blah. Schools must provide instruction on social media's effects on mental health and other areas. And then implementation deadline, which is a good thing. It says all public school districts in North Carolina must have policies in place by January 1st, 2026.
Well, I'd like to know if that's included.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm just saying.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And the governor Josh Stein emphasized that the bill provides a distraction-free learning environment and a mental break from the pressures of social media.
I just don't think, I just don't think, uh, maybe we truly understand the effect of, um, social media. Or we choose not to, to understand the effect of social media and all these platforms on our students. I, I, I think sometimes we turn blind eye to it. They're not, their brains are not developed enough. They're not old enough to, to process these things. And frankly, there's just some things you've just got need to see or deal with uh, while, while you were young, while you were growing up. Gosh, there's things you don't need to see or deal with in your mind. It's, it's just how it is.
And I, I think too, just, again, this is a personal thing, but just the social interaction of it. I remember now, most of the time in my classes, I mean, I'm, I'm teaching available bed, right? But on the occasion that maybe some students are finishing up something, and maybe some have finished already, I had students sometimes that would say, Mr. Matthews, uh, can we, uh, can we get on our cell phones if we finish? I'd say, no, but you can talk to somebody. And you talk about side lines.
They don't.
They don't have to do that. They don't have to ever.
They don't. So, I think, um,
Sad.
All right, so now, do I hear then that we need to change this time maybe 7:15 to 3:15? Beginning. Enter the building. So enter the building. I'm not necessarily.
That varies, right?
All right, so if we say enter the building, and it say, an exit building? Are we good with the exit building? Okay, so Mr. Chapman, we would like the directive that says until we can square up our policy and make sure it falls in line with the law and incorporate some other things, from the time the student enters the building to the time the student exits the building, that that must be powered off.
So the board of education directs that cell phones be powered off when students enter the school building and remain off until students exit the school, students exit the building.
Sounds good to me.
And I, and I know it's already been mentioned, but, I mean, just like the law addresses, there are exceptions with that, with medical issues and things like that. So, parents can, they work within principles on that, as you call it.
But my, yes.
You don't, you don't necessarily.
Those of us who have more than one building, it probably needs to say campus instead of building.
All right, I'll go with campus.
They'll say, oh, I left the main building. I'm headed over to the vacation.
Oh, you're right. There's that little city in New York. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so enter the campus, exit the campus. I'm good with that.
And I hate, I hate the person that continues this, but I, I would point out, like, if we go that route instead of, say, instructional day, I mean, just we technically also say, like, kids can't have cell phones out, like, when they go to the gym and they go up all practice. Just send a period of text. I mean, I'm not saying.
Okay, well, I mean, that, that, that doesn't start till after 3:00 AM.
But, but they're still on campus, right?
So, until they exit the campus or after 3:00, 3:15, do you?
That sounds very good.
Cause I think it's reasonable to think that kids are gonna use their cell phones. Just use your cell phone, like, right before all practice starts, right after school day.
The school's instructional day.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
You're gonna say at the end of the school day is, what do you say?
The board directs that cell phones be powered off when students enter the school campus until students exit the school campus or after 3:00 PM.
Okay, after 3:00, yeah, that's, that's it.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're there until 3:00 PM, right?
It may be universal to say during their school's instructional day, and that covers all the schedules.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to, and this level of note, I just don't want students to say, well, I said 3:00, so. I don't care what you're doing, I don't care what you're saying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn my phone off. It becomes an issue.
Yes, it does.
The veil that dismissed.
Pardon?
The veil that dismissed.
Yeah.
But I had more than one, I had more than one dismissal, Bill.
Okay.
So change that last quarter till, till their school's instructional day.
Okay, all right, all right.
And we're gonna, we're gonna use these consequences, right?
I think so.
So these are the consequences.
Well, as we move forward with the policies, we have, we have to, we have to have a meeting about this. And one thing they did ask that we review though, so we can, we'll start with those, and then from the, Ms. Level, when you have some.
Yes. But they have Apple washers too, but if their device is powered off, then that, I'm, I'm. I hear, I know. I'm alarmed here.
Maybe this is.
Then for all.
To hit start.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say one more thing. This has been productive. Of course, we've not only discussed this in the board, but we've got input real time from the people who do it on the ground. And know, and know what, how this affects them. So, so this thing did.
Yeah. So change the cell phones with wireless communication devices. Okay, but don't you?
But I'm sorry. I had a. I don't know their feelings about this.
The board recommends that wireless communication devices be powered off when students enter school campus and remain off until students exit the school campus or after their school's instructional day ends.
That sounds good to me. Administrators, how does that sound to you all? All right. All right, then I guess that's my direct introduction. What else do we want to know?
You ready to make a motion?
Absolutely. I think, and Ms. Gaddis is the second. All right, I do not have any further discussion. I feel like I've said enough about that, so don't get off. Uh, Ms. Gaddis, do you have further discussion?
No.
Uh, fellow board members, further discussion on this until we can move forward with, uh, an actual, you know, policy. So, do we general vote, roll call vote? What do I need to hear, Mr. Chapman? Okay, all right, so, um, well, we'll just, we'll just do a general vote. So all those in favor of approving this directive until we get our policy set, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great. Okay, now, the rest of these policies, they're, uh, those are the first reading, so they'll come back down, but we'll, you know, talk about them again if those are approved. In the meantime, we'll, we'll take into account what has been offered by our administrators here, uh, for, for policy 4318 to get that in line with what, what we need to do by the law, and then what we can take into account from the administrative point, standpoint, and student standpoint. Now, there is one, there is one policy that we need to go ahead and waive the second reading on and vote on, and that's concerning, uh, foreign exchange students. So, who wants to speak about that? Dr. Paken, Dr. Woody, who wants to talk about that?
I can.
Okay.
The last time, I think it was 2017, this policy update, there's some things that have changed that wouldn't bring more up today. We actually have, uh, been reached out to foreign, foreign exchange students. We just want everything to be in line on visa information, those types of things, which is not in our old policy. So, I would recommend you do adopt this one.
Okay, well then, uh, do I just make a motion to waive this? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the second reading of policy 4140 concerning foreign exchange exchange students. Uh, and it will be replaced with 4153C foreign exchange students. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Paken. I do not have any further discussion on this. Mr. Paken, do you?
No.
Uh, fellow board members, do you have discussion on this?
I just wanted to clarify. You said
Absolutely.
that, um, policy 4153C is actually being replaced, yes, by policy 4140.
And I said that backwards. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to.
All right, so I can just do a general vote on this as well? Okay, so same thing. All in favor of approving this policy and foregoing the second reading, uh, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed by the same sign? Wait, moving right along. Yes. Oh, gotcha. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go back just a minute. We're not gonna go on to, uh, the school calendar. Uh, I'm gonna move back. Ms. Hesse, what, what information can you share with us?
Oh, we wanted to update order on a change to our Apple purchase. Following a review of the ESR indirect cost that we had taken off our ESR grants, we have moved to make a purchase on those non-allow devices. Rather than lease, we do find that to be more advantageous, uh, price point to our board, not just now, but in terms of sustainability. Also, um, we are moving into, we're moving quicker into our rollout to the six, eight devices. With board approval, we would like to start that this fall. And then toward the end of the year, we, now that we have secured our federal funds, we have been working directly with Power One programs, um, and work to supplement the elementary four-five program for devices as well, with anticipation date for Christmas or shortly thereafter for those devices. And if we're looking for, we wanted to know if the board of that, um, uh, purchasing change to you as well as seek your approval to escalate that timeline for the other class.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Mrs. Hesse's report. Moving towards with this Apple purchase as well as the rollout. Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't know who's, who, Mr. Ellis, okay. I don't have any discussion. Mr. Ellis, do you have discussion?
No.
Fellow board members, discussion? Let's roll call this vote. Mr. Chapman?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I'm not calling anything tonight.
Ms. Gaddis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Coleman? Mr. Ellis? Mr. Matthews? Uh, Mr. Paken? Mrs. Redford?
Aye. All right, great. All right, next on this. Okay, now we're moving on down to our 2026, 2027 school calendar. Uh, so, Dr. Woody, that was all.
The ca, the calendar is, uh, basically the same type of calendar that we've had for the last several years. Uh, we did look to see if there was anything that we could make changes with a little bit of adjustment in the law, but at this time, uh, that did not work out. You know that in the future, you can come back and make adjustments if you need to, but we did want to go ahead and get a calendar out for.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, so we've got the calendar ahead of us. Do we have any discussion about this calendar?
I think there's like 10 and 11, somewhere along that line. Everyone, if we, if we missed any more day, we'd have to make do that.
What, what is the PR?
He's talking about April, uh, well, actually September 22nd and February 11th.
It's just not the P, I'm just, where's that at?
Proctor's reports. Those are Proctor's reports.
Right. I would add that for the key.
Okay, gotcha.
So people are mainly without.
Well, that's okay. All right, well, uh, so we've got this calendar. Well, I'll make a motion that be approved the 2026, 2027 calendar as presented. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Matthews. I don't have any discussion. Mr. Matthews, do you have any discussion?
This add also, um, RC before card one.
PR?
Yeah.
RC.
PR.
Okay, a fellow board members' discussion on this calendar.
Ma'am Chair, I think we, um, this was clarified the last time we did calendar approvals, just to clarify, this does, we are allowed to use remote instructional days. Is that right? Is that fair? Is that what this does on here? Cause I thought.
We can, but don't, uh, we actually now have a plan in place. You have to file plans with the study. So, there is a plan being filed this year.
Okay. And again, I just want to clarify, I wasn't a fan of the remote learning to the pandemic. But I do see value in the remote instructional days to avoid missing for any weather, especially the students that are in classes, or they're holding, whatever.
All right. Okay, any other discussion? All right, same thing. Bring your vote. All those in favor of approval of the 2026, 2027 school calendar as presented, uh, make, by the side of aye. Aye. Any opposed by the same sign? Great, moving right along. Now, we also have some information in front of you, uh, concerning this real property. And there's been an offer, so I want to make a motion in the second to approve this. So, all right, so I'm due by Mr. Paken. Go ahead. Mr. Coleman is the second. Fantastic, Mr. Paken's discussion.
No, I'm sure.
Okay, Mr. Coleman's discussion. All right, um.
This, this has been, in fact, this one's been, this one's been one that the school system's had for years.
So, okay, um, so I can do the same thing regularly, or do I need to roll call? Let's see, okay. Roll call. Uh, Mr. Chapman, if you don't care.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gaddis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Coleman? Mr. Ellis? Mr. Matthews? Mr. Paken? Aye. Mrs. Redford?
Aye. All right, now, because we have approved this offer, it will enter the upset bid, uh, process, and my understanding is it's 10 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so potentially, I don't know that we will, but potentially we could have an upset bid, so we may be coming back to the table on this one. But anyhow, 10 days, the clock starts now, tomorrow. So we'll, we'll know in the next couple of weeks. All right. Now, uh, this Murphy Mountain Property feasibility study, what am I doing with this?
Uh, for a motion, second.
Okay.
Just wanna send it back to the calendar equivalent there again.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, well, uh, then I make a motion, uh, that we, uh, use tax, sales tax on the amount of $50,000 to contract a suitable design concept for this Murphy Mountain Property feasibility study. Do I have a second?
Oh, so, I actually had a conversation.
Oh, so, I actually had a conversation with the commissioner, and he brought up, I don't know that I considered, but I would like to discuss half and half, saying they would pay half, we would pay half. So I don't know where the half would come from, because it's just fifteen thousand, it's just our, where's it? But the statement was made, well, would you be okay if we paid half and you paid half? But I don't know. We just said, I mean, I'm going to say that like this.
I would prefer to send it this way. Okay. All right, so I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. I do not have any further discussion. Mr. Coleman, do you have discussion on that? Okay, uh, fellow board members' discussion? No. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Paytham.
Mr. Murphy, how do you vote? Mr. Coleman? Mr. Ellis? Mr. Matthews? Mr. Paytham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gaddis?
Aye.
Mrs. River?
Aye. All right, that brings us down. Uh, so we will not leave again until Thursday, September twenty. That will be here at Central Office at 5:30. Um, so I will begin with final comments. Mr. Coleman, final comments, please.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Curtis, you, you went first, and I would just like to respond to some of the, I'm not sure if the, the dropping off and the picking up of students, I don't know if you were referring to what is currently or with the new K through eight proposals, because that doesn't exist in the new K through eight, they just simply go to school.
We used, all my life, you know, when you went to school, history, you had, you always had, if you went to high school, you always had to go to Central, like, well, Michigan, you would get on another bus to go to high school. But what my theory is, that I've raised five guns, and their four, five-year-old, six-year-old, put them on school bus somewhere, call them somewhere, and you're gonna take them off that bus, put them on another bus to go to consolidation area.
That's not the case for this. And just, just for, for it to be proven, so the, the K through eight that we proposed is strictly the central part of the county. It involves, uh, four schools, Peachtree, Orange Creek, Murphy Elementary, Murphy Middle School. So, well, how do you get them there? You go to pick each one up, take them straight to there? Yes, that's the school they go to.
You change the, the routing, because then it becomes one, uh, one district, one boundary. It's not considered these individual communities. The, the boundary changes and you wrap your bus as a portal.
Do you realize that the whole message you're going up to have?
Not, no more than what we have now, because we have the same number of students.
And it's your high school district. In other words, essentially, I want to say this, um, your, your high school district that exists now is now your elementary and now your middle school.
Yes.
Well, actually, just your elementary, because we've already consolidated the middle school and, and the Murphy district. So, leave that to the transportation experts.
Yeah.
I still believe, though, even if you get the bus to pick it up, the pickup, that's a long way for a four, five, or six-year-old to drive a bus without seatbelts and on the secondary road, especially if you're coming from March Creek, Peace Breeze, Little Denver, you know, all those, but that's a long way for a six-year-old or a five-year-old to ride on a bus. It's not that, it's not that.
Excuse me, it's further distant, like it's further added distance?
Yeah, it's further added distance. I mean, if you're looking at probably
Three and a half.
Uh, well, if you're looking at four and a half, five, but some, if you live way back in the woods.
Well, yeah.
I lived way back in the woods, and that's been going on since I started teaching school.
Yeah.
That was fifteen years ago, not at all.
I just, I just love the kids.
Yeah, I didn't pay any, it is.
I worry about, you know, I worry about food. We never lost a child in school bus, in two thirty-five. And we had several killed in the morning. But we never lost a little five-year-old, five-headed girl, or a little black Indian boy. We never lost one, and that could be a terrible thing to remember.
I, I think as we, as we move forward and, and once we go down this road, I think it would be helpful to be, to be mindful of how transportation routes would change and what that would mean to increase times and those kind of things.
Sure.
But, but echo what, uh, Mr. Coleman was saying. Yes, that some bus routes will inevitably be longer potential. But how much, and how much can we tolerate? We are only talking about the, this, the Murphy district, and, you know, there's, I know that we're a lot larger than a lot of surrounding counties, but I think we need to keep in mind that a lot of surrounding counties, they only have one elementary school, and some of those distances are very long. You think about Grand County, if you live over, if you live in, at Stokoe, and you gotta take that mountain road across 143, get to Robbinsville, that is a long bus ride. And Swain County has the same thing. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're, um, uh, uncaring about this. I just, I just think it's a reasonable proposal. Now, a very popular consolidation idea is an east and a west. K through twelve, and then you've got even more increased, um, travel times, because now you've only got two elementary schools in the county versus three. So, um, so all that factors in, and I, and I think it's, it's a reasonable request for us to be mindful of that as we move forward and try to do our best to limit that. But I also don't think, um, that it's, um, don't take it as personal, sir, but I think the word you use is cruel, and I, I respectfully disagree with that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's cruel to propose what we're saying here. Now, if it turns out, and, and it's gonna change the bus routes to, it's gonna add two hours to every bus route, then, then maybe you have a point there. And so I think as a board, we will be mindful of those things as we move forward. It's just finding the balance between what we can, we can tolerate and, and what's reasonable to expect people to change to make. You know, the, the most efficient consolidation plan would be one center relocated, K twelve, but that's not reasonable. And we all, everybody here just vaguely realizes that. And so we're trying to find the middle ground where we are within reasonable. But, but I do think as we move forward, if we get to that point with our plan, with the commissioners, that we, we take that into consideration and make sure that what we're doing is, is limiting those types of things and be mindful of that. I think that's a reasonable request.
And then, uh, Mr. Wilson, I don't remember everything that you talked about, and did run a couple down. So, before we have, before we have all that, you were actually awarded the grant through EPI, and then you start that process. So, however, personally me, I filled down almost, and I think it was three, four of them, and since I've been on board, and I think that most people I've ever had to show up was four, and that was just to give the town the information of what we were gonna propose. Um, but to answer your question, if we took, but if we were fine with it, I wouldn't care to have one tomorrow. I wouldn't care to have one today. If you wanna meet today, I'll have one today. But, um, so I don't, I don't remember everything of what your questions were, and sir, I forgot your name. I'm sorry. I forgot your name.
Your name?
David Black.
David Black?
Yeah, so, right now, where we sit, three months ago, we gave the county commissioners the proposal, it was seven to zero from this board. This board that we stood on has these, our job, our, our, one of our jobs is to come up with a plan that the seven of us that were voted to sit here to make that decision of what works best for the county educationally and financially. That is the authority that we have. The authority, so, so we have done that, and some people say, well, you just came out with an narrative. That's wrong. I know a few of us on here proposed this exact same plan three and a half years ago. I worked on it till last, my wife really wondered if I were gonna work with a school board or going into Woodlands, and we're gonna spend so much time on this. So it's not some fly-by-night thing. And if anyone that's listening to this would love to know the economic reasons of why this plan is the only one that works for this county, you have to not only know the educational losses and things that we don't have, and what this K through eight will bring, not only to the central part of the county, but to the existing county, other parts, because we can reallocate all our resources. Whenever you go from four to one, your resources exponentially grow. So on an educational scale, it's crazy how big it is. On a financial scale, what you have to understand before we can give the county, because your concern is the county, I personally know offense, but I think that's essential here. I would love for them to be here. I beg for them to be here. It's the, the most frustrating thing I've ever dealt with in my whole life. But if you don't know the current financial situation of Cherokee County schools, you don't have the education and the knowledge enough to know to make a decision, you don't know those. I'm not talking down to you, this is just to bear with listening, because it goes hand in hand. We have one shot at this. We have one shot at a grant, and speaking of the grant, you saying that we're not ready for it. We proposed that three months ago. This is three months today that we have wasted, that they have wasted, because they won't. All, all you're asking them to do is agree for us, the seven of us, who sent you a seven to oh, that's the authority we have. Their authority is to tell me, us, if they can afford it. That's it. That's the only authority they have of this. They own the purse. They have to sign equally with us, and anytime there's a drawdown, they have to sign on that, but as far as their authority and their obligation is strictly financial. We have removed that obligation, because we are stating one of two ways. We can either build this K through eight fully with a grant, or if we got to subsidize it with some of our debt services, we can do that. So we're not asking for anything on that. I gotta be careful. It's three years ago, I made a comment on a video, it went, could be when everybody got that. I'm not saying that I don't need, I need them crazy to get this done. But what I need them to do right now, the questions they asked, how much is it gonna cost, and you brought up the land again. Anybody would tell you, if you're in the, if you're in the market to buy land, you don't let the land on your home, you're looking to buy it before you make a house from it, because then it's gonna go up in price. We know, I've asked, I've told every commissioner and asked them immediately, so I can tell them all these things, too. Whoever talks to it, period. So, but, uh, something just ran by me, I almost think, but we accept them that, what we are asking them to do, the seven of us who are allowed to do this job, we want to go to the next step. We've taken it absolutely as far as we can. Until they give us the authority to move forward a little bit more and give them actual numbers, then we're stuck in the water. And just as we know before, even after the grant is aborted, it's still not a done deal. I mean, if the county commissioners sent the money back last time on the same plan that you're trying to reset again. So, you know, there's questions there, but any, any question that any three of you have, or any commissioner, if anyone listens, I will meet you at your house. I'll come wherever, and I'll tell you everything, uh, of why this plan works and, and the reasons of why. Uh, and, so I had no intention of saying all that, but, um.
And your wife and brother can go to their house and then come to your house.
You can come to my house, I gotta go home, I gotta go somewhere, see you soon.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that, um, you're asking, they have a responsibility to the taxpayer, and you're asking them to endorse the plan that, 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 uh, has, has no hard cost associated to it.
So that's, so. We, we, we visited a school in Union County, you know, the exact cost of that school, plus the dirt movement, plus the purchase of that land, and we, and that was an exact number, and we would, we would model that exact.
Well, I don't see if that was a K through eight school that, that you visited, then.
Well, that's it, but, uh, we're gonna, we're going to, we need to get through some final comments, because we got a close session to get to, and we're past a couple of separate, separate comments, so I'm, I'm sorry, but we're gonna move on. Mr. Paytham, final comments?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll try to be great. I would like to take a few points about what was said, and, uh, and I, I will say that I, I respect everyone's person and right to, um, address, make their concerns known, even if I don't agree 100%, and that's, that's what makes our country great, and I thank you for that. I would just like to point out that when, when we voted as a board, previously we were voting for what's typically known as the High School Consolidation Plan, that was a long-range plan that also included as a phase two, three K eight schools throughout the county. So, I can't speak for the other board members, but me as a board member, when the high school consolidation failed, and I don't like to bring that up, because I, I'm, I moved on and not affected. I moved on. But, um, but I also moved on to phase two, because we have a long-range plan that's still in effect, this board is still not voted and changed it. We have just went to implementing the phase two, because phase, the protection phase one was not allowed to us. Um, so, so, I think, and I don't know if we as a board didn't do a good job communicating that to the public, or everybody was just focused on phase one, but, but we are, we are just following the plan that the previous school passed. We really are. The, the other things that I would like to say is that you, you made some good points about Albert Tier Two County. That makes the grant even more competitive. One of the things that I think it's very important to keep in mind, that one of the things that the state, uh, uh, ranks you on is does your grant application consolidate schools? And simply building Murphy High School new facility does not do that. So, whether we agree with this plan, we'd rather build Murphy High School a new facility, the fact of the matter is that the state, they rank grants based on if there's a consolidation happening. So, that, just in itself, with nothing else taken into consideration, would make this, this plan a more attractive grant application to the state than simply building Murphy High School new facility. I also say that I think everyone on this board recognizes the need for a new facility for, for Murphy High School. And, and I will say this in the hope that we can continue to move forward and find a compromise with the commissioners and work together instead of at odds, but speaking for myself, I'm only one board member. I would be more than happy to go on, on, on record as saying that if we move forward with what we're proposing, and again, like it was pointed out, that was a unanimous vote, which I honestly, I said would never be possible, and I was wrong. That we immediately say our next grant application is for a new Murphy High School. I don't have any problem saying that. But I do think the order is important, because I think based on those rankings, what I just said, we have more of a chance to get that, and I think, too, we have to put ourselves in the shoes of the state. I mean, and I'm not, and I don't say this with point fingers, like I said, I've moved on. But, but sitting in DBI's seat, we burn them. We as a county, we burn them. I mean, when you, when you send back $50 million, it turned into $62 million from their perspective, they're, they're gonna be a little gun shy about handing over millions of dollars to us. And if we show them, I do, I firmly believe that if we show them, as, as a Board of Education, as a commission board, that we can work together and that we're serious about moving forward, and we can get a grant application and build a school, then, when we go phase two and apply for a new Murphy High School, they're gonna be more likely to give us that, because they've seen that, hey, they're not gonna return the money, they actually want it. That's just my opinion, and that's all it is.
Morgan, have a special.
No, I'm not taking any more public comment. I'm not taking any more public comment.
No.
Mr. Ellis, uh, comments?
This is, uh, what the three gentlemen came in, or the two gentlemen came in. We're thirteen campuses. A new high school, you're not gonna tear it down. If you, if you build that school over there inside, uh, the school of innovation, the new high school, you're gonna tear down Murphy, Murphy High School, because it's attached to Murphy Middle School. So now, that we squeezed a, a, a quarter out of a nickel right now with thirteen, now we have fourteen. That makes no sense whatsoever. The, the plan that we came up with, yeah, the, the school that we went to in Union County was not exactly, it wasn't K eight, but it was the same without students, same size. And they did the thirteen, though. And for a K eight, we get fifty-two, fifty-two million. Kick this can for, the middle schools that are in this county should have never been built. The foresight of whoever was on that board that approved, uh, March Creek, that should have been a K eight, or that should have been a middle school for March Creek and Murphy then. The, the, the county was not growing in nine separate. They, they tied our two bases together, and we're just trying to untie, and we fought. Everybody in the tier two school thing, it's not my fault. It's not anybody's fault, I'm just sitting here. That's county commissioner's fault. That happened because of their, their failure, not mine, not anybody here. I just think that this is the best plan that we came up with, seven to zero, and we, I don't know what else to tell you. And we, I don't know what else to tell you. If you look at all the information that we've looked at, then you, you would probably come up with the same thing. A Murphy High School was a great idea. I agree with Jeff, phase two, but I will say this, if somebody else says something about Murphy High School's age, go to Andrews High School. I promise you, Murphy High School is a, is a shiny dollar compared to Andrews, I wish, I promise you. Those pipes in the ground there are from 1940s. We have that all across this whole county. And we're just trying to piece it together. I mean, you know, county's seven to zero, so we made that pretty good.
Ms. Gaddis? I love community schools, I think I love small schools. And if it was financially feasible for us to keep all of them, I'm 100% for it. Somebody can show us how, and provide us with the money, we're all for it. Mr. Murphy?
I wasn't planning on saying anything, uh, but I guess I will. It's been said several times that the vote on this school was seven to zero, and that's true. However, I will say that I'm not necessarily sold on this plan personally. I would list to several people, several board members, that I think that's a lot of students for that age group. The reason I voted for it, essentially for the fact that a month, maybe two before that, we had previously sent over this six-year twelve plan to the commissioners, that got no traction. There were three or four different plans that were discussed on this board, descended to commissioners. I would consent to everyone of them at the same time, to keep from wasting the six months while the time. I got that voted on, that's how it goes, the board could. I'm not trying to talk bad about the commissioners, anybody, but the constant back and forth has to start, nothing's going to change. That's just the cold hard facts of it. I've been accused of giving them too much power, well, as I've said, they control the personnel. We have to have their body on it. That is the reason why I wanted to send this one to you. For that reason and that reason why. Am I completely against this plan? No, no, I'm not completely sold out on it. No, no. The, the biggest thing I would convey, I've said for three and a half years, is the constant back and forth just has to start.
Mr. Matthews? Okay. Mr. Chapman, you have your vote.
Yes, ma'am, there's a envelope, a survey that I gave you from you, it's from Turner Co. If you have it, please fill that out, return it to me, or Mrs. Pass, a juror is convened.
Dr. Wood?
No.
Okay, come help me. I'll just, uh, y'all, I've been sat here tonight, and, uh, I will say again, seven oh. I cannot in my remembrance ever remember a time when in this county facility, you said they're just going to seven oh vote on any plan. I understand, uh, I do understand, and I appreciate the passion of where people are coming from, because I feel like that's the best interest, and, um, you know. It, it's not easy to sit on this board, it's not easy to sit in this chair, it's not easy, because everybody has an opinion about how you should do some things. I understand that, but we specifically, as it has been mentioned before, this group of seven has been passed with that. And I feel like we've done everything in our power, we've explored every angle that we can explore. This did not just come out of thin air, just like Mr. Coleman had said from the time that, at least when myself and Mr. Coleman, and I think Mr. Murphy and Ms. Gaddis came on the board, that has always been one of the plans that has been talked about and presented, but we have to start somewhere. And, uh, when, when the grant is talked about, and the rubric components are talked about, and you should, you know, like it was said, if you can combine, uh, where campuses, if you can, those schools, that, that gives you a higher ranking. The other thing that was mentioned was, you know, from where EPI is, and perhaps they're gun shy, and they don't want to consider us. Well, maybe, but guess what? There's also a new administration out of EPI, there's a new state superintendent. So, um, I feel like I really do, we have to start somewhere. We've got to start somewhere. After going and taking a tour of Union County, because, uh, let's be honest, I mean, it's thrown in our face every, every single second of every single day, and we are compared to that county. And that is, that's fine, great, that's wonderful. Sometimes the only, the only things I take a bit to being compared to that is their pots of money are completely different from our pots of money. So, we're not apples to oranges in that respect, uh, we're not. But, but if we can take something that they have done, regular shit district has done, and we can try to look at it and apply it to our situation, and make it work for us, then why wouldn't we do it now? I know that they're in the county out on the East Coast, I cannot remember the name of the county right off the top of my head, but they are wanting to do something, or in the process of doing something similar to what we are looking to do. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they did get a grant for that. So, um, it's been good to have some talks with them, because they get paid about the same pots that we get paid about them. So, if you've seen things up, but I do appreciate folks coming out and telling us how they feel about it, I do. Uh, and I, you know, because we don't always have that, we don't always have folks who come with public opinion, so, not to change the pace. Alright, now, we have numbered down the line, we're going to go into closed sessions. I'm going to read some things to you before we go into closed session. Alright. Pursuant to the provisions of 141 General Statute 143-318, 1183, and 143-318-11C, I'm going to put the Cherokee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 150C-319-21. Under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. So by this time, oh, sorry, who's the second? I made a motion.
Six.
Mr. All in favor? Aye, great, we're going into closed session.